This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to another virtual town hall hosted by Northland Neighborhoods Incorporated. I am Eli O'Sullivan-Curtz. I'm the operations specialist at NNI, and I will be moderating this virtual town hall today. For those who are new to the format, we have conversations with city officials. Today, we're meeting with First District City Councilor Kevin O'Neill. Welcome, Kevin.
Morning. How is everybody?
And just so everybody knows, I hope everybody's doing well this morning. And just so you know, we are usually joined by Councilwoman Heather Hall as well, but she had a conflicting meeting this morning, so it's just going to be Councilman O'Neill. We do have the chat feed open and available for anybody who has questions for Councilman O'Neill as we proceed today. We're going to continue until the questions dry out, so we thank you all for being here with us today. And if you have any questions, just drop them in the chat, and we will get to as many of them as we can. So at this point, Councilman O'Neill, I'm going to pass things off to you.
Yeah, Eli, is there a way we could ask people to identify who they are so I know who's on the call?
Sure, yeah. So you may have access to a viewer list.
Yeah, there's a lot of caller. There's a lot of.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I think.
I know it's callers up at the top, but if you scroll down, you'll be able to see full names.
Okay.
Looks like we've got some new folks and some returning folks as well, so.
Okay. So thank you, guys, for jumping on here. I'll try to make it brief. It's been a pretty quiet city hall for the last three or four weeks. Committees, not a lot of things have come behind, gone before us. It's more housekeeping stuff, contractual allocations and stuff like that. I do want to touch on some things that I think are important. Right now, we are negotiating or working with Clay County, trying to get the CARES money. They, from what I understand, the CARES money is supposed to divide it up by percentage of population within that county if you don't have 500,000 people in your municipality. And none of the, none of the Clay County municipalities have over 500,000, so everybody is subject to Clay County's, I don't know, whims, I guess you would say. From what I understand, originally, we were supposed to get 50, 55% of the allocation of the 11 or the 30 million. But from what I understand, the commissioners took some of that money and gave it to the school districts in the area in Clay County and to the Health Department. So we are only getting 55% of what's left, which translates, instead of the 15, five or seven million we originally anticipated, we're going to be getting 11, 11.5, something to that effect. My, my fear is, right now, we are trying to pass an ordinance or a resolution that would allow, allow us to take the 11.5 million and hold Clay County harmless. But I think there's a committee meeting today, actually, at this point, with the commissioners, who are going to approve a request of that nature from Commissioner Jerry Nolte. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens there. Hopefully, this Thursday, we'll be able to pass that ordinance and get the money. The last thing I think we want to do, although the mayor is now in front of Jackson County asking for, giving them receipts to pay for, you know, police overtime, firefighter overtime, health care overtime, and other issues that are COVID-19 related. And, and I don't think we in Clay County want to have that same arrangement with Clay County. I would like to get the money and spend it accordingly and hold them harmless so that we can, I just don't feel comfortable going in front of the commissioners and asking for reimbursements. So that's the CARES money. Obviously, the city's opened. We have restaurants and bars and gyms and salons now opening. I'm still not sure that there's a lot of people going as of yet. I'm sure there are in certain places, but I've noticed up north, there has not been a lot of participation in the restaurants and such, other than a couple that I've seen, but I've heard others are having difficulties. We do have a COVID testing pop-up coming up to Northland. It's going to be at the same place, the ANAC crossing where we held it last month. It's going to be tomorrow between 11:00 and 4:00, and I would encourage you to call early and make an appointment because they did sell out last, last month on their pop-up there. That's, I've got a few other things, but if anybody'd like to comment on those or question any of those things, please feel free to ask. And if there's any questions, just, just pop in, because I don't, I don't mind. I don't want to talk very much.
Certainly. So we do have our first question this morning. This is from Doug Irvin. He asks, has the city determined what the amount of their qualified expenditures to date are under the CARES Act guidelines from the Treasury?
Not that I'm aware of. It appears each county is operating separately, so I don't know in getting the money. My fear is, is we want to, we want to, the money we get from Clay County, we would like to see stay in Clay County, much like, you know, let Jackson County keep their CARES funding money and let us keep the Northlands funding. I don't know if that's going to work through the council. They, they don't like to share as much as we do up here. So in answer to your question, I was, I'm afraid that finance wants to pay all the back bills with this, which would, would suck up a lot of the money, and not much of that has come up north. So it is a concern of mine that if we give, if the money goes directly to the general fund, both Jackson and Clay, you know, I think the, the city will end up utilizing that more south of the river, and we won't get a good, we won't get the portion of that we feel we are entitled to or need.
Sure. I have a little bit of a follow-up question there. This is from myself. So I, I know that there's CARES Act money that is coming to the cities, and it sounds like you're saying that each county will sort of be left to itself to determine how that money will be spent.
Well, not, not really how it's spent. They won't, they won't determine how it's spent. They'll determine how it's distributed, or they will distribute it by, we, we as a council or the mayor taking our receipts to their, to the commissioners, and they would determine what they would fund or not. So it's kind of a gray area there is, yes, there are state, there are state guidelines, but as we found, you know, not, one of the state guidelines was not allowing, you know, that money should not have been given out to the school districts and the Health Department before it was split up among the cities. So, or it should have been a portion of it, but the 55% should have been, for, for Kansas City residents, should have been based on the entire gross dollars that we were getting from the state. Does that make sense?
Understood. Yeah, that does, that does. My question was going to be, what conversations have the First District City Councilors had about dreams or expectations or plans for how the money will be allocated?
Well, we, we would like to, our first, our first meetings have been more about getting the money and making its, passing a resolution that would allow that to be spent in the Northland. Then it would be a combination of helping businesses, it would be helping, you know, reopening pains and, and, you know, firefighter and police overtimes. There's a lot of, there's a lot of expenses associated with COVID-19 that go beyond, you know, the, just doling out money for various, various issues. So we don't know yet. I mean, at this point, we're still, our focus has been getting the money and keeping it up north. You know, there's a lot of, you know, there's just a lot of, of places north of the river that need help, and we just want to be able to allocate that money where it needs to go.
Certainly, certainly. So we haven't had any other questions come in the chat just yet. I want to remind everyone that you're welcome to post any questions there, and we will get to answering them. I have another question here, just sort of for my own curiosity. I know that the CARES Act money is probably a little more complex than would be suitable for this question, but I'm curious, what sort of discussions have happened or what sort of processes have been put in place to help folks who are still struggling with things like employment and housing in the First District?
Um, not a lot. The, the Northland council people have not had a lot of input in where money is being spent, although Councilwoman Robinson did pass an ordinance that would allocate money to certain zip codes, and we had two or three zip codes within that, that would be, that would be tied to some of the allocations giving out, given out to areas hardest hit. But we don't, we haven't got that money yet, so we're not really sure how that's going to be allocated. But we, we did include two or three of the Northland zip codes that have been hardest hit, and they will, they will receive money from the CARES package specifically.
Excellent. Thank you. We have another question that's just come in from Richard Hurtig. The question is, I've watched both budget presentations to the city council with great interest. The elephant in the room issue is the fact the person coordinating the projections for both revenue and expenses departs Casey, Missouri in the very near future. The buck stops where, waiting for more data is very reactive.
That's a great question, Richard, one I don't have an answer for. We are, we are losing department heads at a record rate. We now have interim positions at Finance, City Manager, Finance, Public Works, I believe, I can't remember, there's a couple more in there that also have department heads, acting department heads. My concern is, is that the COVID-19 has kind of put us, put us back several months without a, of, it doesn't appear to many of us, to Heather and I and Dan and others, that there is a lot of effort being pushed to pursue a new city manager. And I think Ernest is doing a great job, but he's a placeholder, and at the end of the day, you want somebody in there quickly so that you can, you know, you can have a plan. Right now, I'm not sure who's running the city, and I think that's, that's important to, for us to finalize. And, you know, granted, we have a lot on the plate from the COVID-19 problems, but I, it's a good question, Richard, and I wish I had a better answer for you, but it's, it's a, we are, we are wondering when that process is going to begin.
Great. Thank you for that. It, it sounds like there are a number of vacancies going on in the city right now. Do you know any information about candidates who are applying to those positions, or is that sort of outside of your?
Well, no, I mean, my guess is, is that we are in a position where without an act, with an acting city manager, there's not going to be any positions filled other than acting positions until a new city manager comes in and reviews. You, you don't want to start hiring people, and then a new city manager comes in and wants to hire his own people. That's, it's at a point where I think why we're losing people is, they obviously don't like the uncertainty of not having a position, and if, if, you know, if a new city manager comes in and decides to bring in his own department heads. So we're losing people because of the uncertainty, and I, and I think at a time that we're in right now, I think that is critical, that we get more certainty so that we can go forward with at least fewer acting department heads and more department heads that are in, you know, being hired by the new city manager. So that's, that's, it leaves a lot to be desired, the position we're in right now.
Sure, sure. It sounds like the city manager is the real key to moving forward on that, too, so.
Yeah.
It will all be.
Definitely. You know, I, I mean, right now, we, we had a, we had a, some budget expectations last week that the Finance Department sent out that show us what we're going to be dealing with for the next, you know, five years, based on the COVID-19 closures and the, and the lack of earnings tax, the lack of, the lack of sales taxes, the, the dollars that we're going to lose, and how are we going to, you know, cut, for lack of a better word, staff and resources to, to basically cover what losses we're going to have. And I know that one of the conversations was laying off 500 people. That scares me, you know, they have a, in one scenario, they, they show that we could lay off close to 43% of our, of our water and aviation employees. We could, in another scenario, that, in another scenario, we could lay off 45% of our officers and, police officers and firefighters. Those are, you know, unacceptable numbers, and I don't know where we're going to go as a council to find those reductions, if indeed we have to, or if there's other ways to look at. Right now, we're, we're still waiting for numbers to come in for last month, April, and for probably by June, we'll have a really good idea of where we are as far as negative resources. You know, we have a, we've been lucky, and I, and I come in the last council, last two councils probably, for their work on creating a budget surplus. So we have, we have budget surplus to cover us on a lot of the, a lot of things, but, you know, we still have to find ways to get through the next five years if these, if the resources dry up like they have. I mean, right now, we have already 90% losses in the reductions in the, what is it, the tourism tax. So others are going to be anywhere from 6% to 15%, you know, based on earnings tax reductions and sales tax reductions.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for that. I want to, we have a couple of questions that have come in here, but I noticed in the chat that Carol Mackin is here in the meeting today. She said that she knows she was unable to be on the call last week, but there was a question about Evergy's rates. I'm going to re-ask that question from last week, and then I'll give it to Carol for a response here. So Carol, this question came in from Richard Hurtig last week. He was asking for a status update on revenue shortfalls and increases in liability, specifically regarding the, he says, no sales tax will increase the cost for power and light, for example.
Okay, I think that that question, oh, I'm sorry, am I echoing on your guys' end as well?
Yeah, I think we cleaned it up here now. Try again.
Okay, is that better? Okay, great. So what I wanted to do is, Richard, I need to, to verify, were you asking about Evergy's rates, the electrical rates? Were you talking about possibly the Power and Light District? Okay, yeah, if it's apparently, yeah, I can't, I can't respond to that, so I will have to let someone else respond to that. However, I will take just a minute and let you all know that what we are doing with, at Evergy during this time is if anyone has, excuse me, if anyone needs assistance with their bills, we really encourage them to contact our customer service line at 816-471-5275 so that they can learn more about what can be done. Everyone's situation is different right now, so we just ask that they contact our customer service line and talk about what can be done with their, with their accounts. We're not cutting anyone off currently. We're trying to work with everyone, but there will come a time that we do have to get back to normal, and so we definitely want people to be able to keep up with their bills. But as far as rate increases, we have a process whereby we, we look at all our rates, and that's an 18-month process before we're able to actually implement anything. So right now, if we were just, in general, if we were wanting to raise our rates beginning June 1st of 2020, we would have had to start on that process January of 2019. So it's not something that we do just randomly. We're able, we have to work with the Missouri Public Service Commission, we have public hearings, there's a very long process in that.
Gotcha. Well, thank you very much for that answer, Carol.
Carol, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Knowing that process, has, has there been a process in place at this point?
Not that I'm aware of. And anything that we would do now would actually not be able to be implemented for 12 to 18 months, so, but it is a large process, and I have not heard of anything that we're doing right now.
Okay.
Councilman O'Neill?
Yes.
I, I had a response from Tammy Queen when Carol had given me the information that this was more related to the Power and Light District.
Oh, okay.
And Tammy Queen said, the city annual budget, the full amount of required debt services for the Power and Light District debt and all other debt. There will certainly be a reduction in revenue available for debt service, which will result in a larger than budgeted general fund subsidy for the project. This has been factored in to the updated five-year model, which will be presented to the City of Finance, Governance, and Public Safety today on Wednesday, May 13th, which is already taking place.
Yeah, thank you, Marcus. Yeah, the, the, the budget concerns are daunting, no doubt, but I think we're at a point now where there's really, until, until they get enough of the numbers put together, you know, we just have to kind of wait until June to determine what kind of changes and things we're going to have to do to, to make the budget work.
Certainly. Well, thank you for that answer, and I want to move along here to a couple other questions that have come in. A reminder to anybody who's just joined recently that the chat feed is available for any questions that you may have. And Carol, I know you've hopped off a video and microphone, but would you mind posting the Evergy customer support line into chat as well so that folks can have that available? I got the first part of it transcribed, but I missed the last four digits.
I will be glad to do that. I'll do it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question comes in from Deborah Cole. She asks, has there been a decision on opening the playground equipment and opening the swimming pools, specifically the subdivision swimming pools?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that the, the playgrounds are still in conversations, but I haven't heard when they, when they plan to do that. As far as subdivision pools and other, other pools, there's been no decision made that I'm aware of. Marcus or Diana, if you guys know of anything that I, that I haven't heard.
Terry, Terry, recently, when the mayor sent out all the updates on the openings.
Yeah.
It says that on Phase 2 for Parks and Recs continues bringing additional facilities online to facilitate day camps, rest institutes, open gym times, open ice skating, ice skating lessons, fitness classes, and the three largest pools while adhering to strict guidelines, the 10-10 rule and social distancing. We will continue to monitor CDC recommendations for pool openings. So they're just going to have to wait to see what the, I guess, the CDC says about that and what the, our Health Department and the mayor's office have to say to that. As regards to the playgrounds, they come in, in the third phase, and they don't give any dates. They said Phase 1 is actually taking place on May 17th, but they don't give any dates on Phase 2 or Phase 3. But Phase 3 is the last section on this that deals with playgrounds and shelters.
Right. That's kind of what my, my thought was.
This is, this is Terry Reiner, and I'm not, I, your assistant just called me, so I jumped on.
Oh, thank you, Terry.
Yeah, so I kind of caught the tail end of that. Thank you, Marcus. I can tell you, we're watching, you know, of course, dealing with our local Health Department, and also watching nationally what's going on. To date, 96% of playgrounds are still closed at the national level, and I think the concern, well, I know the concern from our Health Department is, it's just too many touchpoints, and if they're open, I'm assumption that there is cleaning with 96 playgrounds. That's, that's kind of been impossible, so playgrounds will probably be the last thing open, the working on our, we do not have a, and pools, we still don't have a definite. I can tell you, if we open any pools, it will be Gorman Grove, and if we open a third one, it'll be Swope.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Terry. Our next question comes in from Deb. Question is, does Casey have enough tests for everyone who may have symptoms? What about antibody tests?
Well, I can, I can tell you that this pop-up on tomorrow is that, that the ANAC crossing is, and I want people to be prepared, if they, if they do call, please make an appointment, because they sold out relatively fast yesterday, and I don't, I don't know what their status is at this point, but I would call. But it's a very invasive, you know, it's the swab in the nose, and they, they go pretty, they go pretty high, and it's a, it's the only testing I understand right now going on in the Northland. I would call, you know, for any antibody testing and more, more, if you have concerns, I would call the Health Department, because at this point, I'm not aware of where else. They, they do have five pop-ups going up this week, so the Health Department might be the best, best bet to, to contact.
Sounds good. Well, thank you very much for that. We have one more question that's come in so far. I felt like this would probably be a good one to end the meeting with, but if anybody has any other questions, we're still open and available for them. So this question is from Marcus Smith. He asks, will there be a First District happy hour tomorrow night?
You know, I, Marcus, I think Heather was going to contact Nikki's and find out if, if they would allow us to do that on the outside. Do you know if she's talked to anybody over there?
She hadn't given me an answer, so I was, I was just trying to see if you had heard.
I had not.
Something out.
You know, maybe we, we might make that, if we can't do it this week, maybe we can try to do it for next week or the week after.
That's fine with me.
I like to get permission from Nikki's first, because I don't even know, I don't even know if they're open yet. I thought I saw some people in their, in their, on their outside patio yesterday, but couldn't, I was kind of far away.
Okay, just thought I'd ask.
I appreciate it. Is Diane on the phone?
Diana Redzovic.
Yes, I am.
Do you have anything that you want to share?
Um, nothing, nothing that I can think of. I was going to try to get like a main number for the Health Department real quick and post it on here. I'm, I'm with Deb. I, I just think testing is the answer.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd like to have that antibody testing answered, so.
Um, yeah. I do want to say that NNI and the city have finally, Deb's longstanding angst is somewhat over now. We've, we've come to the, we've concluded financial matters, and we're gonna, we're gonna get that young lady moved to a new building soon. Deb, is it October we're talking about, that the, that we would be moving NNI? Is Deb on?
Yes, Deb has put in the chat that October 1st is the date that we're planning to move.
Okay, good. And other than that, Eli, I don't really have much else.
Sure. There is one more question that came in from Deb. There is one more question that came in from Deb. Deb asked, "How are things going at McCright's?"
I, they, as far as I understand, that they did, they did test all the ones in the, and, and keep in mind, the outbreak was in the memory care unit, which has about 80 residences, residents, and from what I understand, that they had, they tested nine positive. Seven of them were staff and two were residents, which kind of, I, I don't know, the last I heard that the health department was going to be testing over in the other building, which has about 200 residences, but I haven't heard yet if they have completed that, started it, or, or in the middle of it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that update. Yeah, so if you don't have any other announcements that you wanted to make here on the call, I suppose we can bring things to a close. We've been going for about 30 minutes or so, so it's a solid chunk of time.
Yeah.
Anything else from you?
I'm good. I want to thank everybody, thank you everybody for joining us, and I hope it was informative, and if there's anything you would suggest to, to add to this weekly meeting, please let us know.
Everyone who has attended is more than welcome to send email to info@nni.org or either of the council folks' contact information for suggestions and ideas or even questions in advance. We are going to have our next meeting this time next week. Councilman O'Neill, do you know if that's going to be a regular office hours meeting or, oh, no, no, it's Memorial Day.
Yeah, it's going to be, no, no meeting next Monday.
That's right, that's right. And then the one after, do you know if that's going to be a typical office hours meeting or if it's going to be?
I think it'll just be office hours because I think our first, well, wait a second, our.
It'll probably be a First District problem solving, Councilman.
Okay.
Also, they've been asking me, Councilman O'Neill, about releasing these videos that, that we're doing here on these town hall meetings. Are you good with them going ahead and releasing those?
Yeah, as long as Heather's okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, I don't see there being any reason why or not, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get that cleared up with, so NNI can put those out on the YouTube channels.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Certainly, yeah. So I have a few announcements before we wrap up the call. Like we said, the next First District office hours will not take place because of Memorial Day, so it won't be next Monday, it'll be the following Monday. However, we do have some other upcoming events. We have a meeting on Tuesday, the 26th, at 4:00 PM for the 4th District, so you can come talk to city councillors of 4th District there. And then on the 30th, which is a Saturday, we're going to have a virtual version of the typical Donut with Dan meeting with Councilman Dan Fowler from the 2nd District. So folks who are interested in attending that, keep an eye on your email. We'll be sending out information that way, and you're also welcome to contact us directly for that information. Once again, that's Tuesday, the 26th, and Saturday, the 30th. And then the next First District meeting, it looks like it'll be Monday, June 1st. So for everyone who's joined in, thank you very much. We are working slowly on getting, oh, Diana, did you have something to add?
I'm sorry, I just updated the chat with the health department phone number, in case anybody wants to get signed for the test or antibody questions.
Yes, thank you for that. So folks can find that in the chat as well. And remember, there's also the number for Evergy's customer support service in the chat feed, too. So with that in mind, I'm going to draw this to a close. Thank you very much, Councilman O'Neill, for taking some time out of your morning for us. And for the rest of you who are listening in, thank you for attending, and we will see you folks here in a week or two.